Normal Town Council for Monday, April 17th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever. We have one public commenter tonight, Mr. Ron Ulmer. Ron, if you want to come forward.
I thank you for allowing me to address the council tonight. I just had one comment. I had sent an email about this six months or a year ago. I never received any response from anyone. I said before you ever redo the parking decks and all, take a look at Bro, Advocate Roman, or whatever they are today, Carl Advocate Roman. Parking lot, parking deck. And I want to talk about the parking decks, the lighting of the parking decks. When I exit the parking deck, either one here on Beaufort Street, on a nice sunny day like this, and I can barely, I have to wear sunglasses, and yet there's an extra bunch of lights at the exit and entrance, and they're on all day. And as I noticed when I came in here, you know, two sides of the waiting room here by the Amtrak, one's on the south and one's on the east, the lights are all on. I lived for two years in Europe at airports and all, where there's glass along a wall, the lights aren't on on bright sunny days. They're on different photo cells than the other lights. The best way to save electricity and to reduce pollution is to not have lights burning when it's so bright, you can't even look out of the exit. And yet there's extra lights during the, near the exit, which I agree should be there, but you don't need them on on bright sunny days. And I think the perimeter lights on each floor of the deck should be on different photo cells. Maybe on the north side, they have to be on the outer row of lights all the time. But I don't know why, you know, I used to travel quite a bit, go up O'Hare, the lights along all the, by the windows were on. I went to Munich and they had just opened a new airport. The lights closest, the rows of lights closest to the windows weren't on all day, and it was plenty bright in there. So it's just something that I would recommend in the plan to control the lights on the outside of the parking lots, especially the three sides that get quite a bit of natural light. They can be pretty sensitive, so if it's an overcast day, they come on. But why we burn lights when it's so bright by the exit all day long, the exits of these two lots, and you can't even see barely with sunglasses on to exit the parking lot safely? Just something to think about. But our engineers, in some ways, we always think we're the first and the best. When it comes to saving energy, I still think we lag behind the rest of the world. Thank you.
We move to the Omnibus Agenda items considered routine and will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to hold an item for discussion.
It is item D, as in dog.
Mr. Nord?
Item F is in Foxtrot.
We have approval.
Second.
Items considered, it's a very long list tonight, items considered under the Omnibus Agenda, our approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 3rd, 2023, a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of April 12th, 2023, an ordinance reserving volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters, a resolution to award the bid and approve a contract with PJ Here Incorporated for the reconstruction of well 17, a resolution approving the purchase of a Trimple Forensics X7 scanning system in the amount of $59,836 and from Silo Geospatial and with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant Funds. Resolution accepting a quote and authorizing the purchase of point-blank Omega Hard Body Armor in the amount of $51,961 from Ray O'Hara, also with a DCEO grant paying for that. A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and accepting a quote and authorizing the purchase of two MPS Commander 3400 Mobile Surveillance Trailer Systems for $164,974 for Mobile Pro Systems, also with a DCEO grant. A resolution approving the purchase of a Diamond Office 22RE Rapid Response Trailer for $43,660 from Diamond Specialty Vehicle, also with a DCEO grant. A resolution approving the purchase of a DJI Matrix, Matrix M30T Tethered Drone System, we all know what that is, for $34,374 from Adorama, also with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant. Resolution waiving the formal bid process and approving the acquisition of furniture from Widmer Interiors in the amount of $66,774 and 49 cents through the OmniA Joint Purchasing Program and an associated budget adjustment, and a resolution accepting bids authorizing the purchase of an aerial lift bucket truck for the Parks and Recreation Department's forestry operations from Drake Scruggs Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $198,577 and 80 cents and an associated budget adjustment. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item, those items are approved. Item D is a motion authorizing staff to negotiate a contract for professional services with Core Construction for a design build of fire station number two. Ms. Lorenz?
Second. Okay, thank you. May I go with my question?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all right. So, I mean, negotiating contract, authorizing staff to do that is a pretty routine and usual item. However, I pulled this because of the, of the project itself. The fire station there on the east side is a very important project, one that, you know, has been in the, in the development stages for a couple of years now. When we were first selecting the location, of course, it got a lot of attention from neighbors. By pulling this, I'm not at all suggesting that we revisit those conversations, but I am suggesting or asking that we do look for ways in the design process to engage the neighbors nearby. And I ask this for, for two reasons. Well, I should say, I want to say that I'm not asking that the fire station be designed by committee. I can only imagine what might result from that. Obviously, we need to have the experts design it from a functionality, feature point of view. So by all means, that control would stay with the experts. But what I, what I am asking for is to let's borrow from some success that we've had with some recent other land developments whereby the developers in those cases brought the neighbors into conversation to create better awareness and education and to the extent that they could weigh in on certain aspects that they would be allowed to do that. And I just think we would perhaps gain a more successful end product if we do engage the neighbors in that way. So I'm asking for staff to consider doing that.
Ms. Smith?
I don't think this was included with the packet information, but if Ms. Reese could just recap the budget for this and the financing split that's available to take care of this fire station.
I, sure, sure. I believe the budget for this project is $4.9 million. In terms of funding sources, we have some grant funds from the state of Illinois that were secured through former Representative Dan Brady in the amount of $1 million. I believe we have a little over $1 million remaining from a previous bond issue, and the balance is coming from the general fund.
Thank you.
Further? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That motion is approved. Item F is a resolution to accept bids and authorize staff to execute a contract with Cell Electric of Bloomington, Illinois for the town of Normal parking deck relighting upgrades, capital maintenance project in the amount of $476,220 to upgrade lighting to entry, to energy-efficient LED-type fixtures in the College Avenue and the Beaufort Street parking decks. Mr. Nord?
I saw move. Second.
Mr. Nord?
Going off what Mr. Ulmer had, had, had brought up, do these lights, do they have a daylight sensor on them? I mean, will they be going on during the day when there's motion? Because it does say there's motion sensors. I think that's a very valid question because that's a considerable amount of energy because most of the movement's going to be during the daylight hours anyway.
Mr. Nord, I can't answer that question. I'm going to ask, if it's okay with mayor, I'm going to ask Facilities and Energy Management Director Mark Clinch to come forward, who's certainly our expert in that regard, and then Mr. Hanson might have other information to add as well.
Good evening. So, specific question, as I understand it, was about daylighting?
Yeah. Are the, are the lights going to go on during the day when the garage is already lighted anyway?
So, the simplest way to answer that is yes, because there's still a requirement of minimum foot candles that are required in parking decks in the interior. So some will, some won't, just like Uptown Station, Mr. Ulmer had mentioned. Perimeter lights do drop out and they're on photo sensors. There is some, and I can't give you the science behind this, but on exit ways, it's, it's similar to when you might drive under a bridge deck, there's lights burning down the interstates too, if you, if you notice. That's got something to do with the way humans react to light and just a safety factor. Again, I can't give you the science, but lights do burn during the day for a reason. It is intentional in most cases. Sometimes it's not. We have controls that are mechanical and they fail. So, which is good for facilities management. But again, I also appreciate Mr. Ulmer's comments. Ron and I have had conversations in the past, and he has raised good points for us in the past. We've been able to do good work with him and his insights. He's got a lot of experience with that, so we always welcome that. We, we do have motion sensors on these, which ties back into the, the energy conservation efforts, of course, and energy codes and things of that nature that are, are not necessarily just dreamt up. They are best practice, and that's what we're looking for. So overall, the idea is to get everything back to 100% operational. They're, they're at or past their life cycle. So just like everything that gets of this age, it's the time to do it. We've got updated technology. The scope itself is simple. The work is not necessarily easy because it's all overhead. We're thankful to have local partners and local electricians doing our work for us. There's like almost 1,000 fixtures between these two decks. So it's a big job. It's a good job, and I think certainly glad to have it and the funding for it. So, thank you.
Yeah. If you remember, four years ago, we met, and this was one of the ideas, or like one of the conversations we had. So even though it's taken a while, I'm glad to see that we're finally getting this done. You see, it's predicted there's, save like $20,000 a year. I've done a few of these, and I hope that your estimate is like well under what we actually see because I've seen some of our power bills in there, gosh, in these garages, maybe $4,000, $5,000, somewhere in that, in that range. So I'm glad to see this getting done.
Thank you. I, one other comment, I would add that I would expect that this project would pay for itself over the lifetime. And I want to thank council for also supporting us to go to things like the Ameren Programs. They do a business symposium in Springfield each year. As a part of that, being able to attend that, we're also going to apply for an additional bonus incentive of up to 15% on the incentive if we're awarded that. That will be strictly as a, as a product of allowing staff to attend that. So thank you for that as well. Ms. Smith?
I had sent an email to the city manager for clarification on the sensors here because I'm familiar with the, the lights that come on when you enter a room that is fully off, and then the sensor picks up the presence or movement and turns on. And she had responded that in the garage, lights might be dimmed when there's no motion, but then come on. So there will be some base lighting beyond the area where you're required to have that amount of lighting at exits and, and I'm assuming stairwells?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item N is a resolution to accept bids and reward a contract to Amusement Restoration Companies LLC. And that's for the water slide renovation project at the Anderson Aquatic Center and the Fairview Family Aquatic Center in the amount of $192,000. Ms. Smith?
So moved?
Second.
The reason I had pulled this item is I don't know that it was clear in the packet, the timing of this project because Bloomington has just recently announced that they won't be able to open their O'Neill Pool this season. And I was assured by Ms. Reese that this work will not be undertaken until after this season's end. So we will still have this pool and our other pool in Normal, and Bloomington will have their holiday pool. So it won't interrupt the season any more than, than recent events in the O'Neill Pool have.
That, that is correct. Both Anderson and Fairview Family Aquatic Center will be open this summer. They both open Memorial Day weekend. We want to make sure we have enough staff so anybody can continue to apply for jobs, I'm sure. But those will be open this summer. This work, and, and we probably weren't clear in the report, so I apologize for that. This work is intended to be done once the pools close in the fall. Anderson closes in mid-August, and Fairview closes the day after Labor Day. And once those pools close, the construction or the slide renovation will take place and should conclude by Halloween. So we will be able to take advantage of the new slides and the refurbished slides next summer.
But there was a need to have this contract go out now to give them time to get the order for the supplies?
Exactly. Lock in the, lock in the work.
That's all I had.
Further? Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. We move to general orders. The first item is an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Norm, Normal having to do with the Weldon Reserve subdivision.
Move approval?
Second.
Third discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item eight is a resolution approving an amended preliminary subdivision plan for the Weldon Reserve subdivision.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item nine is an ordinance rezoning property owned by Illinois State University in the town of Normal at 402 West Locust, 701 North Main, 709 North Main, 715 West Rab, and 755 West Rab.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
The properties on Rab, those are right next door to a location where somebody has come forward looking for a special use permit for a marijuana dispensary. If we approve this, what happens to that application that's in the works?
I, I don't think there's any impact. The area that I'm looking at, Mercy Davidson, while I'm speaking, the area that's impacted adjacent to campus was identified, that prohibits cannabis retailers, was identified along Main Street.
Yes, but whenever this was brought before council, if it was going to be right next to one of the colleges, that was one of the goals to prohibit dispensaries. So I'm not asking to change the math. I'm just asking if we vote for this, is that going to throw off something in the works that somebody's already started?
I believe that answer is no, but I'll invite Ms. Davidson to come forward if there are any additional comments.
I don't have too much to add. Ms. Reese is correct that the area prohibited around the ISU campus was specifically drawn to be roughly along the Main Street part of the ISU campus, so it doesn't include that property itself.
Or, or any other property that ISU may purchase down the road?
Correct. I mean, the, the separation distance is from schools, and I believe, I don't have the code in front of me, but I believe that's for like traditional elementary, high school, preschool schools, so.
So this will have no impact on the paperwork that's already in process?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 10 is a resolution conditionally approving an amended site plan at 100 North Rivian Motorway.
Move approval?
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. We move to new business, and the first item of business is a presentation by Connect Transit to kind of bring us up to date on where Connect Transit is.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick introduction. Thank you, mayor and council, and thank you Connect Transit for being here tonight. Before us, we have the board president, Ryan Whitehouse, who's the chair of the trustees. And we have a number of trustees in the audience, including two of Normals, Town of Normals representatives, Manu Varouf and Tim McHugh. And then, of course, we have general manager David Braun and a number of his staff right behind him. So we brought the team. So this is an opportunity for David and Chairman Whitehouse to share information about Connect Transit, answer any questions council may have, and, and I appreciate you being here. And I know Connect Transit has done a lot of things in the last 12 months for sure, but has been very busy recently and has a good story to tell. So look forward to hearing it.
Thank you, Town Manager Reese. Mayor and members of the council, thanks for the opportunity, as I know most of you and appreciate the opportunity to be here. David's going to kind of really go into the details of this, but I just wanted to thank you all for the partnership that you have provided to Connect Transit, the partnership between our communities and Connect Transit's invaluable. And you guys have always been there to help make sure that we can provide the best service possible. You're going to see in his presentation, there's going to be a request for a little bit of an increase in our budget that we have covered. I think that you will understand that that is primarily labor cost, and like everyone is experiencing the cost of products and materials are going up pretty substantially as well. And, and David, I'll also say this, and, and Mrs. Reese has been in these meetings. Our board has been very diligent in reviewing these budgets and making sure that we're using these tax dollars appropriately and trying to be as conservative as possible. I'm, I'm confident that this budget is appropriate. I think it's a fair budget to come before the councils. And David will give you more of those details, but we'll be here to answer any questions. So again, thanks for the opportunity, and he's really the main act, so thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you to all of you for your time. What I'd really like to talk about today is how we develop our budget. It, it's something that we spend a lot of time on, a lot of effort on, and something I feel it's very important for everyone to know how, how we do it. Our organization is growing. As the need continues to grow in the area, we are providing more services, and with that is a higher staff requirement. So most of the addition of our staff is in operations. Last year, we, we came into a budget with 160 staff. Now we're at 170. We have additional operators because of the growth of our service and a few other positions because of some of the administrative functions as a result of that growth. Our primary services that are budgeted are our fixed route service. As you know, that's the fixed route, fixed schedule. If you pick up any public timetable, that's the fixed route service that, that we're providing. You can see of our 39 buses, 12 of them will be electric in the 24 budget year. So what that does is it really offsets some of our costs, and you'll see that as I go through the presentation a little further. Connect Mobility is another primary service that we provide, and that's the service for people with disabilities under the, as required under the Americans with Disabilities Act. We provide a tremendous service, more than the act requires, and that's something that I, I actually feel very good that we can say that in this community. Over the past, well, this chart actually shows from 2017 until 20, 20, until January of '23. And you can see how our ridership has changed over the years. It, it was somewhat equal, and then it took a deep plunge during COVID in 2020. It's slowly coming back, and you'll see that our ridership year-to-date over last year is, is 19.6% more than it was last year. We're at about just over 80% of our pre-pandemic numbers. So compared to other transit systems around the country, this is actually very good. A lot of systems are still well below 70%. That's primarily due for, to a number of factors. Because we are able to get new buses and provide better service, we think that that's still attractive. Plus the growth of, of ISU and some of the other colleges here in town, it provides valuable ridership to us. Our Connect Mobility Service also took a very deep plunge in 2020, but is actually 109% of our pre-pandemic numbers. So our Connect Mobility Service continues to grow. It was growing pretty regularly to begin with, but we've seen substantial increases. So since last year, it's grown 40%. That's really just getting out of the, the dip that we, we had in 2020. We anticipate a continued increase in ridership of about 12.5% in future years. There's a number of reasons why this is happening. One is the one fare-for-all choice that was made in 2020. That allowed, that removed a barrier for access to transportation. In addition, during that, we also expanded our service areas. So we're going to the borders of the city and the town rather than just three-quarters of a mile of the public transit route, which is required by the ADA. So again, we're providing more service and people are benefiting from that. The services that we have budgeted for 2024 are the services that we currently have. So our, our current fixed route service, we're expanding Connect Mobility Service, as I said, an estimated 12.5% increase in ridership. Our micro-transit service, something that I proposed to you last year and hope to roll out by spring of this year. It still looks like late, late spring, early summer is when we'll be rolling that out, and we'll make a recommendation to the board in May. And then our van pool service, also something that we had proposed last year, but nobody has really taken advantage of yet. So we're going to commit some more resources to try to get people to use that service to bring people into the city and the town for employment from the rural area. The cost drivers are really hours and The cost drivers are really hours and miles, and we start with looking at the number of days of the year. So it's very easy to see what our hours are. Again, just by picking up a public timetable, you can see exactly when we're scheduled to operate. So we use that public timetable. We determine on a route-by- route basis how many miles and how many hours that we need to operate. 24 is a leap year, so we do have one additional day, but the way that the days lay out, because of the holidays and things like that, it's actually a reduction in the hours and miles in some routes and increase in others. So on the left-hand side are all of our routes. Service hours equate to labor. So whatever hour we have of service is an hour of labor that needs to provide that service. So you can see how it changed from one year to the next. One of the big changes you'll see on this is a reduction in the Sapphire service. The Sapphire is something that we rolled out last year to provide service to West Bloomington and Normal, particularly Rivian. That service, while it is productive, it's not as productive as the other routes. So we're reducing significantly the number of hours and miles on that while still providing a core ridership that people benefit from. So we're currently in public engagement sessions right now, getting input from the public to see what they feel about that. We've been riding the Rivian buses, or the buses that serve Rivian, to see how it impacts them. And some of the changes we made will actually be beneficial to them while still reducing the number of hours. Microtransit, again, we had budgeted to start later in the spring, so we did have some dollars in there for this year. Next year, we'll be providing more than double of what that is. And that's really the driver of the increase. So our hours, again, equalling labor, is about 7.6% higher is what we're proposing. Our miles, again, miles equate directly to maintenance, so that's fuel, that's parts, that's tires. Those types of things are all impacted by the number of miles that we operate. A significant decrease in the Sapphire miles will continue to improve. And then the microtransit service actually runs at a slower speed. So the number of miles that'll be operated on microtransit will be less. So overall, our miles are decreasing, or are increasing only at about 3.5 a ton. We've had some tremendous positive changes, and it was great to hear the discussion of the LED lights. We had a 47% decrease in our electric utility costs, primarily because of the solar panels, and we also outfitted our facilities with LED lights. So the combination of those two things has significantly reduced our utility costs from year to year. We're also replacing 20-year-old buses with clean, modern electric buses. We're planning some fuel reductions as a result of that, but what these vehicles have now are Wi-Fi enabled, Wi-Fi is enabled onboard all of the buses that have Wi-Fi, so people will be able to use the system as well as USB chargers on the newer buses. And as we continue to replace the 20 and the 12-year-old buses, more of those buses will have those amenities, hopefully attracting more passengers. We certainly have some challenges, and as all of you know, we did have to reduce some service, especially our peak service and some weekend service as a result of a lack of drivers. We've been significantly improving that number to the point that we will be rolling back, or will be re-establishing some of those services later this year. We increased our starting pay. We improved, we offered sign-on bonuses, improved benefits, and then we're also creating a career path for development of future riders, and I'll talk about that in just a second. We add retention programs to keep the drivers who we have happy and working for us, and then we're also focusing on some dedicated part-time shifts. So we have some ability to offer flexibility in our staffing. As Ryan said, our parts costs and supplies continue to go up. Healthcare costs continue to rise, and because we're replacing 2003 buses with 2020 buses, our insurance has increased significantly as well. So you can see our total operating budget, we're requesting a 7% increase in our total operating budget, about $1.3 million. We're requesting that from our Board. We requested in the last Board meeting as a draft, and then we'll be finalizing that for the next Board meeting next Tuesday. You can see the significant increases are in bus repair and maintenance. Again, the parts of, the parts costs continue to go up. Insurance went up 35%. $138,000, not a huge amount, but significant when compared to what it was last year. We did lose some professional services. We had some consulting services that we had put into last year's budget that we used, and now we took those out of this year's budget. Software expenses continue to go up, and we have some new software, particularly for microtransit. You can see the reduction in utilities, and then the marketing and training expenses have gone up just because of some of the new services that we'll be rolling out. From a local operating revenue share history perspective, the increases that we've been faced, that the town has been facing, and now the city has also faced, are really a result of Connect to the Future recommendations for the sustainability of public transportation, and it was to support the reduction of the Connect Mobility Fare to One Fare for All. I know that you've had these discussions in the past, but just as a reminder, the total increase in requests over the last few years will net us an additional $928,000 in state funds, and for a total revenue increase of $1.4 million. So it's a worthy investment, and you can see in the red, the red numbers, you can see when those investments took place. So the recommendation was in 2020. In 2021, the city put in their $150,000 that was recommended. In '22, the city continued their $150,000, but didn't add any additional. In '23, the town put the full $200,000 investment, and then the city this year will put in their additional $150,000. So the recommendation that was approved in 2020 will be implemented in 2024. You can see how the breakout in operating revenue works out this year. Our budget always is fully funded, so we have the state operating dollars that we're able to use, as well as FTA, some capital funds that can also be used for operating, and then all the local funds that we're receiving. We do have some capital projects, about, I believe it's about $26 million in capital projects that we'll be funding. They won't all be funded next year, but there are a couple of facilities, a number of vehicles. Microtransit vehicles, we'll actually be buying a interim fleet and then a long-term fleet. So we'll be buying two sets of those types of vehicles, and you can see that's the one on the bottom of that sheet. And then some technologies for, not only to improve safety, but to also improve our passenger experience. So our local capital request this year, even though we planned to spend about $26 million in capital dollars, we did not ask for any capital dollars from the city and the town this year. We were very fortunate through our congressional delegation to receive grants, as well as our state delegation. So we received some Rebuild Illinois dollars. We received some additional grants, and we were able to leverage those against some of the local share that we've been building up over time. So we were able to actually reduce this year's request. It would have been just over $500, nearly $600,000, and we won't be asking for that this year. Going forward, we'll reevaluate based on what we have from past commitments, as well as the federal dollars that we received through grants to offset our local requests. So what we did in the past was we continued to increase every 5% a year. Going forward, we will be evaluating what we need from a year-to-year basis. And that concludes my presentation.
If I can add one thing I want to just touch on, David, like I said, we appreciate all of your support, but our Board and our staff are really happy that we can, you know, with the work that our congressional and our state elected officials, the money that we've brought in, you know, I'm sure you all have heard this, but since the few people that were by me watching this, our system over the last five years has received over $50 million in state and federal grants, grants, money returning back to this community. And as Chairman, I know, Mayor, you've heard me say this multiple times, but as Chairman, I believe that that's a sign that the system is performing well. And that money is competitively, you all know this, it's a competitive grant process, and so for that type of money to come back to the community is a good sign that the system is operating in good faith. So as Chair, I'm really excited that we can kind of allow both the town and the city to keep some of that money to put back into your coffers and use on local projects as well.
Are there questions? Ms. Smith?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of the Board members who serve as volunteers to provide their expertise to Connect Transit. We had another member from Bloomington come in. Linda Foster is here. So I want to recognize her, who wasn't excited earlier. And I also want to thank you personally for expanding that Connect Mobility route beyond the minimum standard that's required. I think the education of the availability is causing people who hadn't otherwise considered it starting to use that service. And I know during COVID, this many times medically fragile population was very timid about continuing to use the service, even though you did try to keep the buses running during COVID. I've got a question, though, about your Redbird service on campus. I've heard anecdotally that on days when the weather is bad, raining, maybe snow, that buses might be crowded by their first stop and unable to take on additional riders. How do you serve the campus with the timing of the buses, and how does that align with the class schedules for students?
The Redbird Express buses are really run under the direction of ISU. So we start the day with one bus. We increase it to three buses, and then we drop down again towards the end of the day. ISU establishes a number of buses that they're willing to fund, and they fund it in two manners. One is they pay for our hourly rate, which is currently around $102 an hour, and then they also, for the Redbird hours, and then they also pay on a per-passenger basis. So they're supporting it, but as a result of that support, they also dictate when we operate. So we have brought this to their attention in the past, the high ridership numbers, and it comes out of student fees, so they would have to determine whether or not they want to add buses.
Might it be advantageous for the students to be made aware of an opportunity for them to advocate to, in their student government meetings, to push for greater service if there is not the level of bus service that the students are asking for, or would take advantage of?
That would be terrific, yeah. If people find that they are unable to use the bus, I think ISU needs to know that.
Okay. Thank you.
Further?
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation. Oh, two questions. One, more curious than anything, on the Connect Mobility, are you able to successfully recover some of the cost of that from, say, like Medicaid? How's that going?
We are. As a matter of fact, the Medicaid program actually increased its stipend this year for trips. So where we were getting, I can't remember what, we're getting about another 50% over and above what that was. So we are able to do that, but it's far less than the cost of the service still.
I know it takes somebody probably on your end working those reimbursements.
Exactly.
Good to know that it's going as well as possible. The other question is probably more relevant to town and what we can do. How's the ADA access going? I know that there were several stops that, you know, was part of a overall plan, and I can't remember the name of the project.
Yeah.
Better bus stops. There you go. I knew it was a clever one. Can you give an update on that?
Yeah. I'm going to just take a stab at this. And yeah, so we are still working on that. I know after COVID, what we did, we did this earlier this year, I believe, the Board, actually, we put a stop to it just for a few months to reexamine, to make sure. Since the COVID, we have seen a realignment where people are getting on and off that, right? The places that we have them are still essential, but we are looking at maybe moving ones that might have been year three or four. We're seeing if those need to be moved up to a sooner delivery date than before. So I think we're in the middle of that study right now to decide which stops need to be prioritized, which comes first, which comes second. The goal is to restart that here in the next month or so, David?
Towards the end of the year, actually. And if I can just add to that, one of the reasons for doing that is that we're having a complete route review. So with the addition of microtransit, we're looking at how we can make our fixed route service more efficient, and then maybe supplement it with microtransit to bring people to the fixed route service, and then straighten out the fixed route to make it more attractive to people. So as a result of that, it's very likely that some of the routes will, the fixed routes will be changed. And we didn't want to invest in infrastructure on a route that is likely going to change. And we know what routes those are. They're unproductive routes. You know, we all see bits and pieces of routes that are not serving people well. We're aware of those, and we are currently undergoing a study, and we hope to have that study done by December.
Okay. I'm sure you will keep us apprised of what you need from.
Ms. Lorenz, since David said that, let's put that into perspective here, right? When we look, we are constantly looking at routes, right, to make sure that they're efficient, and by what Ms. Brown just said does not mean that we're just going to overnight change a route. There's a lot of steps that come in, and public comment comes into play, and there's public meetings and all that stuff. So I just want the public to be aware, we are constantly looking at routes to make them more efficient and to provide more coverage and for more ridership. But if we decide to go that route, it will not be done overnight. There will be ample time for public review and public comment.
I just want to finish with one compliment that I heard from an area community center. They were thrilled to report a partner with Connect Transit to help students going to some of the summer programming at Western Avenue Community Center, and they were quite complimentary of that. So, last thing is, I weighed in on my choice of name for the Connect Microtransit, so when are we going to hear the reveal?
We should be rolling that out hopefully in May.
Okay. Can't wait to know if mine's the winner. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation. I always appreciate hearing the updates and the number of gritty details. I'm assuming we'll be able to get this presentation, Ms. Reese, or can I? Yep, great. That'd be awesome. Thank you. My fingers aren't that fast up here. First, just certainly thanks for the thorough presentation, but also just want to say it's great to see you guys continually refer back to the citizen group input as you make decisions and plan for the future, that you continue to refer back to what the citizens told us they were interested in, and that you're making those adjustments. And the One Fare for All program seems to be paying off already, and although maybe a bit controversial at the outset, certainly seems to be a winner so far. So congratulations on that, and thank you for undertaking that. Just wanted to make sure, you know, some of the numbers I was trying to pay attention to as they whizzed by, but in the overall budget, did I understand that correctly, that funding from Bloomington and Normal combined is less than 8% of your total budget?
Oh, that's correct.
Wow. Wow. That's pretty low. Is that common?
It's not, and part of it.
I know I just dropped an elephant in the middle of the room, but.
We are not a taxing district like most transit systems are. So, you know, we're at your mercy. I think that we've done a good job leveraging our state dollars to make up any differences, and we've been able to expand with those state and federal dollars. So I think that we're very good stewards of your money.
Certainly.
And trying to leverage the available funds that we have to make our system better.
Okay, and one more back of the envelope. I'm sure flawed math. I was trying to scramble up here at the table. So with the additional ask that unlocks the additional state dollars, I have that, how that works accurately. We put in more, and then we capture more state dollars to bring. Did I get that?
Correct.
If I did this, and you don't, no pressure to answer this, but it'll look like that percentage would. percentage would get smaller, that the amount of state funding adding to your total, look like it would reduce our percentage further. Is that reasonable? And don't...
If everything remained equal, that would be the case.
That's fine. You don't have to answer.
But our costs continue to go up.
I was just already trying to consider the value of that. Seems like we're getting a tremendous value for the small percentage that the two communities are putting into this budget. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to start by thanking you guys for the presentation, as well as bringing the entire team tonight. It's nice when the chambers are full, and I appreciate you guys doing your part, filling the front rows. Those are typically the last to fill up. So, thanks for the presentation and for what you guys are doing. A couple of questions, the first of which, it was an early slide talking about your fixed route performance. It looked like the variations seasonally, yep, tend to, or could, I guess, fall consistent with like when ISU is in, when school is in session versus when it's not. It looks like the summer months are down, little blip in winter. Am I reading that accurately? Is that the primary driver of the variation throughout?
That is the primary driver, yes. About during the school year, about 40% of our riders are students.
Okay. Good, yeah. Okay. And then in the summer, I mean, that 40% ISU goes down considerably?
It does. We don't run the Red Bird over the summer. So, whatever ridership would have been on campus is transferred to some of our other routes.
And then on microtransit, those are the vans. Is that correct?
We have two different types of van services that we're proposing. So, one is the van pool, and the van pool is a service that runs from the rural communities to Bloomington and Normal. And we contract with Commute with Enterprise for those vehicles. So, they provide the vehicle, they provide the insurance. All we do is offset the cost of that to make it more attractive for people. The microtransit is the local operating van, and it is, if I can find that slide real quick. There. So, it's the bottom picture. There is what that type of van typically looks like. It's fully accessible, but it's much smaller than even a connect mobility van.
Have there been any conversations or thoughts about engaging with Rivian as, I don't know if something like this would be a fit for either entity down the line, but looking with their production of delivery vans forthcoming, if that would be an easy enough thing to engage with them down the line or no? Very technical question how I asked.
What's the response you gave to Bloomington, David?
No comment.
Got it. I won't ask it again. Last thing I'll say is, and I'm glad Mr. Whitehouse brought it up at the end of his remarks, I continue to be impressed with Connect Transit's ability to leverage dollars and to bring in state and federal funds. It's incredible, your guys' success rate from an outsider looking in at bringing those grant dollars home, and I'm glad that you're doing it. So, thanks, and keep that up. Appreciate it.
Further? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. When you get the grant dollars for these electric buses, do they include any stipend for the additional annual expense increase?
They do not. And the grant dollars are capital dollars, the operating costs are operating dollars. So, there is a separation. We do receive federal funds on an annual basis through a formula that can be used for these electric vehicles. This administration made electric vehicles a priority, so we were able to get the electric vehicles under grants that this administration opened up. We would not be able to get diesel vehicles right now, which are less cost, but also have a higher long-term cost. So, long story short, no, we don't. We get the capital dollars, and then operating comes from a different bucket.
Yeah, okay. I figured it was kind of like that, you know, because it's like even in, like when we get a grant for like a road, you get the grant to build the road, but then you don't get the money to maintain the road or, you know, roof and things like that. So, keep that in mind when you get these new pieces. You've got to then be able to afford to maintain them without the grant dollars. Then, when the microtransit starts, which trailer parks will get service returned back to them that once had it?
We're actually having a study done now to determine where those microtransit zones will be. So, we should know probably by our May board meeting, and we'll be proposing to the board at that time. They're looking at a number of things when they make that determination, mostly the demographics of age, income, auto availability, those types of things. So, they're not looking at particular areas as much as kind of expansive zones, three to five mile square areas that have a higher service need. So, unfortunately, I don't know that right now, but based on what we're looking for to determine where a good zone would be, we think that it'll capture some of the larger parks like that.
Okay. Just don't forget about the Landings Trailer Park, because they had asked four years ago and went through a process and got petitions to try and get service restored back over there. So, unfortunately, the lady that kind of spearheaded that, she was one of the victims in the shooting out there, but her family's still there. You know, there's still folks there that remember that service and probably would still like it, so consider them whenever you get that, whenever it's time. And then, another question is, what is the status of the new IGA that Bloomington has brought forward with Connect Transit? Where's that sit right now?
Town Manager Reese, do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Brown. We actually, both Connect Transit and the Town Normal and City of Bloomington, all three parties continue to have discussions, and I suspect a modified intergovernmental agreement will be coming to council relatively soon.
Okay. My understanding was Bloomington had this done a while ago. Is Bloomington the holdup on it? Is Connect, is it the Town of Normal?
I don't know that there's any holdup. I think there's been drafts of potential intergovernmental agreements going back and forth between all three parties, and we will continue to see if we can reach a resolution that, per language, that all the entities can agree with.
Okay, yeah, because I hear a little bit of grief, frustration from our counterparts in Bloomington who brought this forward. It's probably been a year ago, if not longer. Anyway, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to share just a couple of comments at the beginning, at the end of your presentation. Mr. Brown, if you could bring us to maybe the last slide. I just wanted to say it's very clever. We noticed your graphics, and good job, kudos to your staff. That reminded me to just publicly thank Connect Transit for their partnership with us. I know you also partnered with the City of Bloomington. We appreciate the opportunity to wrap buses. I think they're really unique, and thank you for that opportunity to market Uptown Normal, Parks and Recreation, Cultural Arts, and Normal Public Library. They're very, they're very fun to see those buses go through the community. So, thank you for that partnership. Also, I've shared my thank you with Mr. Brown already, but I wanted to publicly share with council and interested others, just to thank Connect Transit for their willingness to adapt their route out of Uptown Station. They were very willing to sit with us and talk about our concerns with the buses traveling around the circle, and we appreciate your flexibility and your modifying your routes to come out. When buses now leave Uptown Station, they depart onto Beaufort Avenue and head west toward Fowl rather than going around the circle. That is, has been incredibly meaningful for the school buses that are dropping kids off to get to the Children's Discovery Museum. And so, I just want to publicly thank Connect Transit for your willingness to adapt.
Thank you. Nord?
Sorry, there was one more. So, the Connect to the Future work group, this is before your time, there was another point that they had in there. This is probably the time to ring it up. One of the points was to get Connect Transit brought into the conversation over developments that are starting to happen. This was point 12 in the Connect to the, well, in the Connect to the Future work recommendations. I've asked, because now we've got development starting, if these developers have talked with Connect Transit. They've said no that they haven't. So, one of the recommendations was that you guys were going to be an integral part to that. There was going to be some mechanism put in place for both Bloomington and Normal that you guys were contacted, so that way people could start thinking about that, because especially with these microtransit buses, you know, they might be great going into these kind of infill developments that we have going on now. So, this is for council and staff. You know, can you look back to this? Because, you know, we're going to miss out on this as this development spur continues. If we don't get Connect back, and then 10 years down the road, there's going to be another Connect to the Future work group, and they're going to say, well, why didn't we do it when all these developments were happening? Well, now's the time to make sure we get them plugged in.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Brown, all the board members, the staff that's here tonight, just have to, again, acknowledge what an incredible job you're doing. The reading I do daily talks about transit throughout the United States and the struggles that it's having, recapturing ridership, and you guys are killing it on that regard. And it's just, it's incredible to see staff and board members working together to improve the system, constantly looking at ways to improve the system and make it more efficient, more cost-friendly, and more reliable to our riders. So, you're doing incredible work. Keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a motion to approve an appointment to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
Has the public yet been informed as to who's going to be appointed to this position that's supposed to represent them?
Oh, yep. We've changed that. Go ahead.
I have to read before we consider. Recommended is Mr. Brad Rapp to fill an unexpired term of Mr. Andy Byers through March 31st of 2025, for obvious reasons, if you've paid attention to normal elections. Mr. Rapp is a lifelong member of the community. Spent most of his career working in the construction and building industry with a bachelor's of science degree in construction management from right here at Illinois State University. He spent 18 years as a project manager with Johnston Builders and was instrumental in the development of multiple subdivisions and planned unit developments in Bloomington, Normal, and PRA areas. He's been a board member of the Bloomington-Normal area home builders for 10 years, serving as president in '08 and '09. He's currently employed as a business analyst at State Farm Insurance and holds a broker's license at Remax Choice.
Go ahead, Mr. Nord.
So, prior to, a minute ago, did the public know who was going to be appointed to this position?
They did not.
Okay. So, again, my gripe is not with who's being appointed, it's with the process. The folks that are on this board, they are supposed to, you know, help the citizens of the community. The citizens of the community have no idea who's being appointed if we don't tell them, and they have no opportunity to contact any of the council members to give their praise or their concern. And just like you've been recommended for appointment to the Amtrak Board, that was open to the public. People could have spoken on that. Bloomington has this process where it's made public, and the public can answer. So, I would like to see this change, and I just think that the process is not very transparent for the public. This board has also told some residents, whenever they have come forward with their complaints, that this particular board, the Planning Commission Board, their role is not to necessarily listen to what the public has to say. And for those that are shaking their head, I've played this audio. You know, this is out there on the internet, so we can play this. Mr. Day was even consulted whenever that conversation happened. So, you know, I can play it again if you don't believe me. But these are the questions that should be asked of these folks. You know, are you going to listen to the public, or are you going to listen to, you know, not the public? Anyway, again, my concern's not for the individual, but for the process. This should happen for all commissions that are supposed to represent our constituents. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
I'll just address something that was just addressed at me. As I did the night, my colleague made that original comment. I will make the same comment I made that night. The person he's referring to and the recording he played, he took it out of context, played a small portion of a comment, and misquoted the comment. That board member never said he didn't have to listen to the public. That was not it, and it was completely mischaracterized. And if you are interested, I do encourage you to listen to the entire meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. This may be a good opportunity to take the 10 seconds. Can you remind the public of the process for those who are interested in getting involved as there are vacancies on various boards and committees, commissions within the town, what the process is, how it works, ultimately to where names get before us like they are tonight?
Certainly. So, I'd say from my perspective and my history and the mayor's before me, the process can be people expressing an interest, and we have since implemented a application process or an interest process which is available on our website. You can get the information on the website if you want to do that. The other side of it is the mayor, in the past, and I have actually sought out people we thought were qualified for the job and might be good for the job, interested in that job. So, I would say it's probably about a 50/50 mix in terms of how that works. And then, of course, it's an advice and consent. I make the recommendation, and then the council votes on it.
Okay. Good questions. I mean, processes are always good to review, so that was brought up. Specific to this person put forward, I'm a little concerned, and maybe you can clarify how, the concern I have is with the person's involvement in real estate, and if he's a current real estate broker, and how that, how he will avoid a potential conflict of interest when working with land development projects.
I think that's a fair question, and the way I would answer that is, in a community this size, at one time or another, we all come across that issue where we may be in a position where we have to recuse ourselves. Council members have done that prior. If there is an issue that an item came before the council, or I'm sorry, before the Planning Commission that the gentleman had a financial interest in, you would recuse himself.
But are we, are we going to find ourselves with this person having to recuse more than typical?
No. His primary work at State Farm.
Is he a current license holder for real estate?
Yeah.
Is he actively?
Couldn't answer that.
But he could be acting as a real estate broker.
Yes, he could.
I do have some...
Again, it's, there's, there are times when there is a conflict of interest, and a person will recuse himself from that. If not, that is, that's an issue. But in my 20 years, I haven't seen an issue where somebody has acted out of...
Have we ever had a real estate broker on a planning commission in recent history?
Not that I'm aware of. Further on this? Ms. Smith?
I just want to comment on the gentleman having a real estate license. I currently have insurance licenses, which I'm, it took a lot to get them, and it enables me to get residual income, but I'm not actively in selling them. So, I would suspect that real estate licensing may be in a similar... So I would suspect that real estate licensing may be in a similar situation where once you have them, rather than let them lapse and then have to restore them, that might be part of the process, but I can't speak to that, I can only speak from my personal experience with insurance licenses. But I do also want to ask if the mayor could comment on the fact that these boards and commissions are all serving in volunteer capacity, and they don't get compensated for the time they serve and the hours that they spend on business that benefits the town.
Thank you. Further?
Just one follow-up with respect to Ms. Lorenz's comment. I would strongly recommend, if it wasn't already the plan, for staff to make sure that, assuming this appointment goes through, that the new appointee has an opportunity to go through exactly what boundaries are that would qualify as a conflict of interest, given his daily profession, and what isn't, so that it's not a gray area, that he doesn't know how to react in one situation or another with what the hardship we are, when instances come up where he may have.
I would say that all appointees get that as part of their orientation process, and that is part of the orientation process to talk about things like that.
Mr. Nord? These questions are questions that ideally should be asked outside of the council meeting or outside of the council chambers, so, for example, Ms. Lorenz could ask the potential appointee these questions, not in the public eye, you know, because she really needs to hear from him, not assumptions by the mayor, you know, you can't speak on behalf of anyone else. So again, this is why I think this should be made public, so that way the council, the entire council, I'm not going to be here, so you guys can ask these questions, and that puts somebody in a hot seat in the public eye.
And Mr. Nord, I will say you have a solution looking for a problem. For thirty years that I've been involved, either on government or watching government, we have never had an issue like that.
Other municipalities do a different process.
That is true.
Okay, further? Call the roll?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye, the appointment is approved, and Mr. Rapp is in the audience tonight, and Mr. Rapp has been in the audience for council meetings for a number of years. Although the Connect Transit people took a seat, so, welcome to the Planning Commission, Mr. Rapp. We do have one public commenter at the end of the session, that's Mr. Eric Sweetwood. Since I think this is your first appearance, I ask you to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for comment.
Thank you. My name is Eric Sweetwood, I live in the Broadway-Fell corridor, I've lived in Normal since nineteen eighty-four, when I came to school at Illinois State University, I don't like using the initials, and I like to put the word "the" in front of it, too. But I fell in love with the community, I taught for thirty-five years, the town's outside of Normal and Pontiac, and I'm very, very pleased with the work you've done. At the March twenty-fifth meeting, I felt some comments were made, some of you, that was a bit abrupt, and I think if you're in politics, you understand, that you're not going to agree with every policy you have, but people spoke, and I think they spoke emotionally, and that's okay. I'm here to tell you that many, many of the community members are happy, pleased, and acknowledge what a great job you guys are doing. This community, we just saw a presentation from, you know, the bus service, how incredible is this community going, and continues to go. During the almost thirty-plus years I've lived here, this community has grown in leaps and bounds, and a large part of that is due to your work. And I know most of you, and you will say, well, it's the staff, and it is the staff, and I know some staff are here, and they do an excellent job, too, but don't let that get lost on you, because sometimes in politics, particularly today, it gets very divisive and very agitated. Don't let that happen to you guys, keep going the positive directions that you're going. And I'm not Pollyanna up here, there have been decisions you have made, whether individually or as a collective group, that quite frankly, I've disagreed with, but that's okay, that's what politics is. It's hopefully coming together. I want you to know how proud I am, and many of the residents I know, the citizens of this community are, of not only living in Normal, but this council and the excellent work that you do. I just thought you needed to hear that from somebody, because if you do something wrong, you'll hear that. So, thank you very much for your time, and I wish you a good evening.
Thank you. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there comments or concerns? Ms. Smith and Mr. Nord?
I just wanted to put the word out to the families that use special opportunities for alternative recreation, SOAR, which is a recreational program co-sponsored by Bloomington and Normal Parks and Rec. Their summer catalog is out, and their registration will be open in the first week of May, so be looking through the wish book and see what you can sign up for. Thank you.
Mr. Nord? Thank you. Just want to talk to the council, and going forward, don't forget the underrepresented folks in our community. Seek out complaints and problems that people have had that have not been resolved, the ones that have been resolved, those people are not going to complain anymore, but there are still people that have problems. You know, we had, I mean, we just learned, I don't know if we just learned, but look into the folks that have had problems and still have them, like, you know, if they complain about bad water, find out if that's been fixed. If it hasn't been fixed, you know, find out why. You know, people do still have sewage backing up in their basements, we got emails about that. Call them, find out why, find out why this hasn't been resolved yet. You know, this happens, you know, not all the time, but it does happen, and until we fix it, it's going to continue to bubble up when we get big storms. Yes, no pun intended. And, you know, a lot of folks, if they have complained, they may have reached out so many times that now they have disengaged, and now they're not coming to complain to us, they're out in the public complaining. That's not what we want, right? So the ones that have disengaged, that have had problems, follow up on those folks. You know, we still get emails from a lady that spoke here at the last council meeting about issues, you know, she's still having those, she's been emailing us for a long time, you know, we can't have that continue, because, you know, when she emails us, she's also telling all of her friends and everything about how we don't listen, so we need to stop that. And also, when you make decisions, consider not our generation, but the impact of your decision on the generation that follows us, because any debt we take on is going to be the following generations that have to pay for that. And, you know, they're going to be off in school, experience some other locale, and they may decide, hey, you know, I want to come back to Bloomington-Normal to raise my family here, to take a job here. Well, they are going to look at, you know, what's the overall cost of living, which includes the local tax burden. And I'm sure we've all had friends that have moved away to Texas, and, you know, they tell us about how their taxes are so much less, that it's like a pay raise going to live elsewhere. Well, our kids, whenever they get done with school and they get their first jobs, you know, they have a choice to come back here or go elsewhere. You know, I want the following generations to come back. It's much easier to keep families here than to keep trying to attract new people to come and try us out. So keep that in mind, you know, this is for all decisions, I don't know what decision's going to come before you, but, you know, think about the following generation. Thank you, and good luck. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do a, there he is, a shout-out and congratulations, and thank you to the Normal Public Library. They recently received the 2023 Community Partner Award during ISU's Civic Engagement Celebration. The award recognized the many partnerships between the Public Library and the Illinois State University. How do I do? And just wanted to say congratulations to Library Director John Fisher and the staff for all the good work they're doing with the Illinois State University. Thanks.
Thank you. Question for adjournment, please.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.